We're called to order the Banner County Board of Equalization at 8:30.
Don?
Present.
Robin here, Lee?
Present.
Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the courtroom by the entrance consent agenda items.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we need to look at that correspondence, sorry? Do we want to look at that correspondence, is that anything?
You guys had a copy, didn't you?
Probably.
I haven't.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, is it this one case?
Yes.
I think you guys all would have gotten it in the mail too, from Karen.
On the stand? This is just kind of their report, can you see?
Yep.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Don?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Item five, items of business before the board, scheduled time limit per parcel for protest hearing, Casey.
What do we want to do for that? Because we have a time set this year. So you probably need a time limit for each protest, right? Or how do you want it?
I would think so, okay.
And I am doing these forms with them this year, saying if they want to attend, if they don't want to attend, contact phone number, email address, all that, and then I'll also write the time and schedule on here.
So you need a protest hearing date?
No, we have the dates.
July 8th. You just give a deadline for those.
Uh, like time limit per parcel.
What do you recommend?
I would think three minutes, that's...
Three minutes for everybody? Or three minutes per parcel?
Per parcel.
Per parcel.
Okay.
I think, but what if they...
And that is just for them talking, or the whole decision process?
They would have three minutes, if we have questions, then we can have questions on top of that.
Do you want to bump it to five, for scheduling purposes?
I would bump it to five, just because some of them parcels are pretty big.
Yeah.
And if they have a business on it, or whatever, they might take the whole five.
That's gonna make much difference.
They don't take five.
They're not required to appear in order to have their protest acted on anyhow, so...
We had quite a few last year, didn't we?
Sixty, a little over sixty maybe.
Three minutes per deal is 180 minutes, so...
I'm okay with five, too, I mean...
I like five.
Lee?
We're in motion.
Any motion?
Move to, set the time limit per parcel for property tax protest hearing purposes to five minutes per person.
Okay.
You get that, Katie?
Per parcel?
Per parcel, set the time limit per parcel to five minutes per person. Per parcel.
Per parcel. It's a poorly stated motion.
I will second it. It's been moved and seconded to set the time limit for protest hearings to a five-minute time limit, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Don?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Item six, thank you Casey. Item six, public comments, the Banner County Board of Equalization will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting, or suggestions for items of discussion at a future Banner County Board of Equalization meeting, the board will not act in or respond to comments presented on the state. You will have three minutes after stating your name and address for the public record, do we have any public comments? Banner County Board of Equal... are you guys ready to adjourn? Anything good?
Yep.
Banner County Board of Equalization adjourns at 8:41. Katie, a while back you stepped off on a board, can you, or a committee, can you remind me which committee that was?
Grievance?
It was the grievance committee. I wondered. So, we have more on that. Is there another one you want to be on? I can't, not looking at the list, I don't know.
Hi. If you guys need a spot. Should we also bring that, 100% solid? All the complaints are done? No, they're, the hard work is over.
Not yesterday? That's what it is, it's January Nebraska.
We're gathering people, right there. My word, this is what, corn's late. It's just getting set, we're gonna have to stop this tomorrow. Especially...
Okay. I put that claim for that pickup, got that on my desk. Yeah, I pulled it right away this morning when I got here, I was like, otherwise I was going to, you know, I'd forget, it would get run through, so...
Did you say you pulled the claim for the pickup?
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
That's one of the things that we're in address.
We had...
Eric this morning?
I got their reminder this morning, Jase spoke with Eric multiple times, I personally haven't, so, was either one going to work, or no?
No, you know, we're not, we're not, pickup was misrepresented.
Yeah, it was. Glad they caught it before we went all the way back.
There's a reason why they sent you.
It's a good move.
You guys didn't get a list of the claims, because we had no internet all day yesterday. I did claims this morning.
People constantly saying, is the courthouse open, and I'm like, yeah? Well, they're not answering their phones, I said, well, it's probably not internet again.
We literally had bites here to fix the problem for me, and whoever else, and literally he was here five minutes, and it went down. So I was like, ugh.
And Scott's bluff was down, there was like multiple towns.
Oh wow.
It wasn't, thankfully it wasn't just them, so...
If things seem a little unfinished, or if you guys have any questions on the claims, since we were all trying to...
I had hoped that we'll pull it, and answer any questions, so...
...save our fiber capabilities to AT&amp;T?
But they didn't sell their power.
Drew was telling me yesterday that they are, he thinks Lumen is gonna, or might have multiple times that we're gonna be down this summer, because they're upgrading their system, so we don't go down.
Right.
He said that's the word on the street, he didn't know if it was, what it was all gonna entail, but something they didn't set up the system right, so they're...
It appears to be very low redundancy involved.
We can start, are you guys ready to start?
Please.
We'll call to order the Banner County Board of Commissioners, Tuesday, June 3rd, at 8:45 a.m. Roll call?
Don?
Present.
Robin?
Here.
Lee?
Present.
Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the courtroom by the entrance, would one of you lead us in prayer?
Father, we just ask for your guidance today as we conduct the business and people of Banner County, give us wisdoms on how to do the best job we can, in Jesus's name, amen?
Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item six, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Don?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes of May 20, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May 2025, any further discussion? I would just like to comment, if we put in details of people's reports, we should put in the facts when, when the board has facts, like Eric talked about the pickup price, that price should be out there in his report. Only comment I got. Roll call vote?
Don?
Yes.
Robin?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Item A, correspondence, next-gen update letter, Nick lease. Think this was just Nick working on solutions to cure the black luck problem. Got your take on it, Lee?
Yes.
And Banner County Historical Society letter, historical date is June 14th, which is a Saturday in Harrisburg, lots of activities going on. You guys got any comments on that one?
Just a reminder that the old school reunion will be Friday night, at the, I can never remember the right name, Century 21, uh, not Century 21, Weber.
I was trying to think what you were trying to think of. At the Weber?
Yeah.
Anything else on that?
We'll have a dinner and just some social time together, we need our SVPs as soon as possible.
Good on that?
Yes.
Item nine, public comments, the Banner County Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting, or suggestions for items of discussion at a future Banner County Board of Commissioners meeting, the board will not act in or respond on comments presented on the state, please keep comments limited to three minutes, do we have any public comments today? Morning. There being no public comments, we'll move on to reports, Highway Department, Jay?
Morning.
Morning.
I've got a couple things I want to run past you and bring up today on. Start with is, to put on the agenda for the next commissioner meeting, is a resolution from the stop sign and stop ahead sign grant, federal grant that we completed, our completion date is the end of June, all those signs have been put up, everything, so, this is a copy of the resolution from the state, I'm sure we'll have our own, we're in whatever, but that's what they printed, gave to me in the email, I'm not sure exactly who needs to see it and what format, but... So, that's on that one. The Road 7 project is almost completed, up on Air Force, in the, and it's a lot nicer down, but it's light. The road was measuring between 21 to 23 feet, from four slope to four slope, very tall and narrow, and I've gotten permission from the Air Force to cut the road down, widen it to at least a 25 minimum standard, if not more, and then we could utilize that Air Force gravel at our disposal on any of our roads at a later date, instead of just cutting it off the side of the road and wasting it. So we have three, one huge stockpile in Johnson's yard that we'll be working on, and then two other locations with pretty good piled stock gravel, so that'll come in handy.
Yes.
For that area. The Air Force is tentatively, as far as I know, next Monday, starting to do their overlays on Road 6 East of Highway 71, again, County Road 28, Northwest Harrisburg here, that Road 7 project, up to the missile site, to mandates on 18, and then on County Road 6 from the state line to the missile site. I have not heard any difference from nobody, or seen any emails, so, as far as I know, we'll start seeing a lot of gravel trucks running around starting next month, or next week.
Do you know who the contractor is?
I have no sign ground. Yeah, they've had a contract for many years in the past, and they kind of got it down to a science, so, they'll be in and out on each road within a day or two, typically. And we have, 1-6 is in the process of getting put together with Eric and I, we've got a couple roads in the area that we're looking at to add to the 1-6, that needs to have rehabilitation and done to it, force and gravel work.
Have we set a hearing for that yet, Jay, do you know?
No, I'm not, no one has said anything to me, we haven't set a meeting, tender to date yet, we are looking to have it completed by the first of July, so, the end of this month.
Okay. Katie, on the agenda for next time, would you put, set date for a road hearing, sorry, set date for 1-6 road hearing? Sound fair?
Yeah, I believe.
That way we can set a date, because Katie will need, sometimes she needs like 10 days to get that.
And the notification, that sounds doable.
Okay.
Other than that, status quo, just try and tread water, put out fires, you know, go to the bad spots, and keep things moving.
Roads are good.
For the most part, I've been happy, whereas...
Had a complaint this morning about some rocks on County Road 6, big rocks, that have been dragged up in the ditch, I've got some pictures if you need them.
Okay. I can take a look at that here this afternoon, I'm sure.
Might just roll them back off into the...
I knew that there was some patch, were these in the areas that had, the road had washed? That's trying to...
Understood.
Trying to heal the spots up, I'm sure is what was happening, and now the bigger rocks have poked through, that need to get re-aggressed, got the same issue out here on County Road 26 East of 71.
Okay.
That, that rain last night hurt us a little bit, and some freshly plated areas, so, at least we didn't get no major damage that I've seen or heard of yet, some of our neighbors have. So, anything else from you guys?
No, I want to add a comment, the pickup that was to be purchased for the road department was misrepresented, we will not be purchasing that pickup, as it is not a four-wheel drive pickup, so, and my understanding is it's already been pulled from claims, so, that's my...
Yeah, they were taking the pickup back to them this morning, and to see what, if they had anything else available.
But there was nothing suitable.
And, so that's, I haven't heard anything from anybody, so I guess it's just a done deal for right now.
Yep.
Glad they caught it before we went all the way here.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Getting some trailers worked on, waiting for some parts for gravel dumps, gravel dumps to get fixed, and up and going again. That's about it.
Does have anything for Jay?
Nope.
Thank you, Jay.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
We department, Tim, not here. Sheriff's Department, Stain, is not here. Treasurer, Kathy?
I have nothing to report.
No? Um, I just want to mention, I've been through the budget, we're trying to decide if we needed to amend that or not, and I don't think we do.
Okay.
But I need to get with you to get those accurate, make sure my numbers are right.
Do you have a minute after the meeting, we could...
Are you available?
Yeah.
Okay, Katie is too, so if I can get with the two of you, we can get that budget figured out, because I don't think we'll have to have, I don't think we have to amend the budget.
Okay, that sounds good.
I think we're okay.
Yeah, yeah, we just had no internet yesterday, so nothing is available, because we're trying to catch up now, internet was down most of the day, so...
Yeah, yeah.
So we actually have nothing else to report now.
And I can come tomorrow if that looks better for you guys, if you're crazy busy today.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, sounds good. Guys, anything for Kathy? Clerk, Katie?
Nothing to report.
Did I get a fund balance for you, Kathy?
Is she got any of your folders?
Okay, I haven't flipped through them all.
But not the, not the new one, that's what you have last month's.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Assessor, Casey?
I don't have a lot either, but valuation of this has went up, and then the other thing I have a report on, sorry, is we are getting a refund from G-Works for a contract that we have nothing to show for, so that will show on the contract we pay next year, so once I get everything back from them, I'll share it with you guys. That's all.
Good deal, thanks for that.
Yep.
Surveyor, Carl?
Oh, did you guys mail paper, Casey?
Nope, thanks Casey.
Yep.
Surveyor, Carl, here, Commissioners, Don?
You want to talk about the situation meeting, or you want me to?
Um, that's not on your reports.
I guess I'm definitely not, that we don't want to talk about it here.
So, you don't have anything on your, it probably wasn't meetings, because we're... Nothing buildings and grounds?
What do we talk about?
Um, myself, Region 22 Emergency Management, we have our budget done, I'll be getting that information to Katie, so we can, with you guys, so we can put it in the budget for next year, it went up a little bit, because we're trying to create an EOC in Scotts Bluff. Um, the budget, as I was saying to Kathy, I've been through the budget, and I think we're okay, we just got current numbers from Katie this morning, and so we have two more rounds of claims to come out of this budget still, but it looks like we won't have to amend it, it looks like we can just overdraw Casey's line items that we didn't budget enough for, in the appraiser part, is that right Casey? In the appraiser part, and just overdraw those, as long as we don't go over that county budget, county general budget total, we're okay, and I believe right now we're like at 70%, counting Casey's, the corrections we have to make for Casey. We also need to look at the treasurer, I think Kathy had something on the treasurer that we didn't budget enough for, I need to talk with her about that, but it looks like we're not going to have to amend that.
Great.
I'll keep sending the budget updates, you guys?
Thank you.
If that works.
Yes, perfect.
But, I thought you'd like to know that I think we can do this without a big to-do. And it helps that we're not buying a pickup right now, just on that there, it's in the budget, but yeah, I don't have anything on the website, Lee?
Uh, nothing to report, my meetings are Thursday.
Item 11, items of business before the board, Colonial Life Life Insurance, Mike Brumfield? Not here, would you come?
I don't, I asked him to come when he was here, and he said, well, do I need to come? And I go, well, if you want to pitch this and answer their, if they have questions, so you can answer them, that would be great, and he said, okay. So, I put him on the agenda like he asked, and all I know is this is a life insurance policy that's like $2 a month per employee that we can pick up if we want to, I don't know any more than that. We only have one account with Colonial Life, I haven't had very good luck with communication with them, they're, they're always decent when you can get ahold of them, but getting ahold of them is a thing, so, I don't, I don't have much more than that.
Thank you. Guys got anything on that?
Nope.
So no action? Handbook updates approval and resolution, handbook committee. Do you guys have any questions on it? We just talked about the grievance committee, and I just asked Katie, she dropped off of that, I remember she dropped off a committee, and I couldn't remember which one it was, so Katie, I'll have to come off the grievance committee, and then we just need to set our grievance committee up, her policy, I don't think that's a...
Are you looking at the one I emailed you? This is the one I emailed you, with the changes on it, I'd actually do change.
Oh. Okay. No, I can't print this one, printers being off, so, I'll look it up, Casey, so that works, but we still need...
Yeah, I think we still need to edit it.
Yeah, we still need to edit our grievance committee, it should have, we have the lay member by the community as Mark Knob, myself as commissioner, Mark is an official, so we need a grievance committee member that's chosen by the employees, and then lay member of the elected officials.
Great.
So we just need to incorporate that, I don't think that's a, not pass the personnel policy today type deal, I think it's just a change, what do you guys think?
I would agree with you, I have a good feeling.
And Casey's got it right on the, on the roll copy.
Those are board appointed, so, that's it, that's an issue.
That's all I had, did you guys have anything to add?
So if it are intended to pass...
Well, can we wait till after the meeting?
That's exactly what I was going to suggest, we have a meeting on... We have a meeting on the.
Oh, good.
So I just.
And you can do it next, or next.
Next meeting.
Perfect.
So.
Because I have some questions, I guess.
Pam Moore is coming to address this on the 5th at 2:00. So.
Yeah, it's going to be.
By telephone, good. I'll be here.
Um.
Where are you going?
Try to.
Do you want to ask me your question, or ask us your question before then, so?
In light of what's going to go on in Nebraska with the cannabis issues, I think we need to have a little bit more boiler plating in the drug policy.
It's going to be hard to do that until there are regulations for that. Which is a stumbling block right now.
You know, they just suspended the guy in charge.
Which guy?
The guy in charge of the liquor commission.
Oh, the liquor commission guy, yeah, 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 I saw that.
I, I just.
But the appoint, the other two appointees made it through, so, at least for the cannabis stuff, so. We'll just have to see, I mean, I think you're probably right, but we don't know what we're regulating.
Okay.
Yet, in terms of that.
When, when they establish their, and adopt their rules and we can reopen that, okay, because we definitely will need to. Okay?
The, the drug tests we do will pick up marijuana, right?
Yep.
And then they just have to have a prescription for it if they.
No.
They would have to have a medical card for that, but the question, I think, the bigger question for the county is if they're an equipment operator, especially, medical card or not, they don't know that you want anyone who is still using, I mean, it's, it's just like, I mean. The other example of this is alcohol. Would you make an exception for alcohol, which is legal currently if you're over the age of 21? Would you, would you make an exception, allow an operator to be, you know, at, happy in that? I think the answer is no. You know, even a point O2 would be too much.
Well, that are prescribed drug, but even if marijuana is prescribed, I mean, operating equipment on if I did whatever, probably isn't cool.
Any kind of medication that, that may have those types of effects or have, or causiness, impairment, judgment, and those sorts of effects would be big things we need to look at.
Yeah.
Can, can we approve this and then like add that later or adjust it later and then?
We can approve it.
We still have the meeting to hand for the questions.
Right, 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 yeah. I didn't know if we.
We'll approve next meeting.
And I'll say, unless there's any changes, then we're going to do it twice, I would think, because if we did it, approved today and did the resolution, and if we made any changes, we would then have to redo that process again.
Better to wait and have Pam, if she expects their new, you know, their new policy.
For that one in particular.
For the cannabis.
So then we'll just, after a meeting, send out another email. Updated what she said.
So on page six.
Go ahead.
On page 64, 8.9 B reimbursement through the mail policy. That needs to be whatever the IRS standard is before.
We looked it up.
What's that?
We looked it up when we wrote that.
And that's 500?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I still have it on my desk, too.
And I, I rewrote that last part of that, taxes, tips, and alcohol, which are the responsibility of the individual.
Which are?
Yes. And, and in between there on presentation and the receipt, we have to have receipts for that.
You want to add that? Is good with that?
I think that was one of the corrections I made.
Just those two?
It was exciting, pardon me.
Just those two?
Yeah, well, like Mark pointed out, we really can't do anything with the current policy till we know, we can't shoot at it or turn it, we can't see. Unfortunately.
And you have, is there any other questions on there or?
Thank you for all the work.
Yeah.
You guys are really lovely.
I appreciate it. It's a lot of work. See that it's all on there?
Sounds good, thank you. Katie, can you look at on the agenda next time? Awesome. Review Fire and Safety System Estimates, Dawn.
Well, basically you've got, how's it happening? You've got the printout there, I don't know if you've had time to look at it. I know how your time is, this is not. This thing's blowing from, oh, probably 15 to 20 to 24,000. Latest thing was the adding of the carbon monoxide detector for the basement. We have one down there, but it's, this one will be linked. If there's an issue, we'll know about it theoretically. Part of what's happened is there are more rooms in this building. When you, when you go from nothing to code, or from nothing to something, you have to go to code, which is the problem. You always have a chance, you don't want to do anything. Our problem is, as Tim Grubbs likes to point out, we could, we burned buildings down in Harrisburg and it's been three hours before anybody realized they're on fire. That could happen in the courthouse. It's our, part of our responsibility is to protect the things that are stored in the vaults, which are fire resistant for sure. But if it burns long enough, things burn. This will bring us up to code. The, probably the things I hate are monthly expenses, which will be $10 for the, the phone line that's required to notify 911 so they can notify us if we have a problem. You can go with them, but it's actually more expensive to use their monitoring system. And I also think that's, as far out as we are, maybe, maybe if you're close into town and stuff, that, that works great. Most of them don't even know where Harrisburg is. Hopefully 911 does. And then you have a semi, semi-annual fee, I don't remember what it was.
I thought it was like two.
Yeah, two, two something.
Two seventies.
One of the things we can look at that'll help us is we can eliminate one of the other services we have. Checking fire extinguishers and stuff like that and add that in with this service probably is, will not change the cost a lot, but it'll help a little bit, so. And I apologize to Kathy and her absence for not including her, Zane was there. But I always feel when Zane's there, he's the security director for the building, that, that kind of covers it. But I think Kathy would have liked to have been involved, sometimes you just don't think about those things.
Chelsea's on that, too.
The safety committee. So, we had good representation. Tim, Tim sat in on the, the last meeting we had when we talked to Ed. I think he had his concerns answered as much as possible, wish he was here to talk about it, but. You know, it's, I, I understand it's a sizable amount of money. Did the best I could. One of the hardest parts of doing this is even though I've contacted a couple other places, we've never received any communication from those other folks. It's a pretty specialized deal and not everybody wants to do it. So, questions?
Um, our safety committee, I lied to you, it's Kathy Natale, Carl Gilbert, and Jim Milner, but do we need to replace Jim? Since he's gone along with the county?
I, I would think we should, but.
And then the buildings and grounds?
Grounds, too.
That's Dawn, then Chelsea's on buildings and grounds, and I don't know in the new one, if we replace Kami with anybody, does it show in your new policy? Personnel policy? Because mine's not right, I, I know the old one.
On which one?
Um, Buildings and Grounds Committee?
That's me, Jim Milner, and Chelsea.
We only have Jim on there, we're going to replace him.
We need somebody in the road department probably to be on that.
Chelsea's on there.
Safety committee?
No.
Buildings and grounds?
Buildings and grounds. That's, that's where I would look, I don't care who it is that makes.
Is, why is, did Jim leave? Why, Jim was on Buildings and Grounds.
Yeah.
Is he?
He is currently. I think he was there because he was an employee of the county at the time.
Like, is, is part-time, did he leave as?
He's, he's got a lot of irons in the fire, I think if you asked him, he would not be offended and we can talk to him.
Exactly.
Well, how about the kind of figures?
Kim or I was suspect would be.
Katie, on the next agenda, would you put, um, appoint committee members for the safety committee? The grievance committee? And Buildings and Grounds? Maybe we can get those cleared away, how's that sound?
Perfect. So, that's the proposal, I guess if you have questions, fire them up, if I can answer them, we'll get them dead.
I see this is only bid till June 13th, is there any way we can pay this in the next budget?
I think that is our intent, is to do it, to ratify it. I didn't really look carefully at it to see if that's how he did it. The prices are for, until the 13th. One of the problems is almost everything these guys use is foreign made. You know? And so it's subject, I think there's a clause in there that says, you know, based on tariffs. Yeah, exclusive tariff related costs.
And. Sorry, go ahead.
I think we can. And I'm not sure if it needs to be worded different, and we make the effective date July 1st. And, and that's what we want to do, that's what we intended to do. That was communicated to, I don't know if this works that way or.
It's 50% due with the order, 50% 30 days.
And Kathy's been working on grants, too, and mentioned there could be a grant for this, or a portion of it. I'd kind of like to hear from her on that part, which she's not here. I can ask her after the meeting.
Well, when you think about grants, it's, it's hard to bid, to have gone through the whole process to bid this. And having not already looking, she knew where to bid these. But this hasn't been a secret. And, you know, grants, grants come as an opportunity for a short period of time. And then, away, if we wanted a grant for it, we should have been looking for it.
But I don't think she was involved in it, the safety committee wasn't.
I don't know. But that's a, a different issue, if you want to, if you don't want to adopt it, that's fine. It's only good till the 13th through this price, it may go up, it may go down, you never know. But if, if we wanted to, how do we do it so we can get it in next budget year is what I'm familiar with. What do we need to change, anything? Everything? Because we can do this the next meeting.
That's what I was going to suggest, just do it the next meeting.
But I need to know specifically what, how we need to change.
I would like to table it till July so we can get into that new budget. Then we don't have to worry about paying half for dates or anything, because to get 24,000 square foot out of this budget where we're at now.
And it's been our intent all along to do it in the next budget cycle.
Okay, do it to June, July.
Can we tell, tell Larry we do first meeting in July or?
Perfect.
Have to rebid it.
I'll have to rebid it, that's what it is, if that's where we're going to be, that's what it is.
We can't, is there some way we can get this modified so that we can put it in the next year's budget? My question.
It's conversation with them.
Well, I think, yeah.
And I, and I still say Kathy, if we can get free money, I'm all about saving the taxpayer $3,000.
She's got 30 days to work on it.
All right, no action? Uh, set special meeting date end of year fiscal claims. This will be the one we do towards any June. Is that right, Katie?
Yes.
Did you have a suggestion on?
I just needed enough time where I could get it, uh, put a notice in the paper.
I would say not the 30th, right? Since that's on Monday, but is the last day.
Well, it would be fine, I just, if we, if I would have waited to the next meeting, I wouldn't have had enough time to get it in the paper, with either paper, so.
How about the 26th, that would give you Friday morning and then Monday before.
That works.
Does that work okay with you? You guys?
It's fine.
Fine.
That's, that's fine.
June 26th?
The interim, I can't.
Fiscal year. Claims.
At what time?
It was just about that, same question.
What time do you guys want to go? On that date? It's a Thursday.
8:30?
Keep it, keep consistent? 8:30, Katie, work okay?
Sure.
All right, so the fiscal year claims will be June 26th at 8:30, it'll be a special meeting.
Okay.
Work previous?
Yes.
All right, set date, 24, 25 budget workshop and amend budget. Well, I don't think we need either one at this point. Did you guys look at the budgets at all, like, in the, um, county general? Is where Casey's will come out of, and then the treasurer. Did you guys look at those?
Uh-uh.
That's fine.
I think we'll be okay.
Yep.
So we don't really need to set dates, do we Katie, until we get into the 25, 26 budget, is that right? If we're not going to amend?
I think we still have to amend because of that fee and money that came in. I think you have to do like a resolution. I don't know the step process 100%, but I think you have to do a resolution on how many monies came in, uh, to the revenue side. So then when we start our new budget, those monies will be shown in our, it'll help with our balancing our budget. But I don't know that, I don't know the process.
That would be a Kathy question? Let me go ask Kathy so that we can set this up, you know, is that something?
Yep.
Just need to do it that same day. 26th, you can do all on the 26th.
Do it all on the 26th.
Sounds like a plan to me.
It's giving you the rain?
I think we got 10 hertz at the hose.
How much?
10.
Yeah.
It came fast. It was bad.
Yeah, just going to after that.
I'm sorry, I walked in. I'm not going to move you. They said no. I don't know if I can explain this right. So we, in the revenue side of the budget, we budgeted $189,000 for the FEMA money coming in. We got in more than that. That'll show on Kathy's revenue side. As long as we don't spend the difference between $189,000 and the more we got, we don't need to amend the budget.
Good.
Sound right? I had to keep that straight. So I think we're good on the budget. Do you guys just want me to send you the changes in that once I get with Kathy and Casey? And then you can see it? And Katie, too, because I need her expenditure numbers, which we won't have accurate till the end of June. So on that topic, we had the budgets from the officials, the different offices, to be due on June 16. And I don't think that's a fair date. Because they're not going to have all of their expenses through their budgets for '24, '25. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Do you want to move that to...
I would move it to like the middle of July.
Okay.
Mark your thoughts on that?
I think that's more reasonable in terms of that. I mean, everybody's got to have an eye on it. I don't know that there's any particular time required by statute as far as when they have to get their stuff to you. But you need it timely enough to be able to. I would say sometime in July. I don't know if the 15th is going to give enough time. But maybe by...
For the, Kathy's got the big one. Because she's got a lot.
Because your meetings in July are going to be the 1st and the 15th?
Mm-hmm.
And you're not going to have another meeting until August 5th?
So Katie, since you have the brunt of those office budgets with the 15th of July, or 14th of July, we made them do from the offices. By then, does that give you? It gives you from the 26th on?
Yeah.
Because you won't have real numbers till then.
Right. The 15th or 14th, whatever, will be fine.
Will that work okay?
Perfect.
All right, so budgets due from the officials on the 14th of July?
Sounds good.
Is that better?
Yep.
Yeah, I was looking at that and I'm thinking, they don't have actual numbers until the end of June on their budgets. So, most of them are okay. But like Katie, there's going to be some numbers coming across her budget that she won't have till the end of June. So budgets due from officials. And I will get those forms out to them once we get to that point. Because I can't do those until after the 26th either, when I get real numbers from Katie. All right, good on that. So we don't need to set a date, I'm guessing, unless you guys want to set a date for the budget?
I don't know that you have to set a date for that. I think Katie could probably... Last year, you sent out our previous year's budgets and numbers and everything, right? And then officials can go through their budget and get that back to Katie. I was telling you she'll still do that.
Then they can be emailed to us for review before. And I don't think there's any decisions. If there's no amendment, there's really no decisions until we get into the 25, 26 budget.
Until you start working on your 25, 26.
And those won't be dates until July, so we're good.
Okay. So no 26, June 26 meeting? Is that what you're saying?
No, there is. We have to do that one.
Oh, okay.
We have to do that one.
Okay.
Oh, I lied. I'm on the wrong one. July 14th is when the budgets are due from the officials. And then... Should we set some of our budget dates on our June 17th meeting? So Katie has time to advertise for those? Because we have to meet with the officials over their budgets.
In July or June?
June, yeah.
I would, the dates would be in July. But we could set those dates our next meeting. That way Katie's got time to advertise.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
It's those budget workshops we were doing.
Yep.
And we can do those with the officials. Some of them won't take long, some of them. Katie might be in all day or... She's got a pile. Okay. So if you put on the agenda next meeting, Katie, to set dates for budget workshops in July? Sound fair?
Good.
All right. You guys have anything more on that? All right, claims.
Everybody got the breakdown from earlier? Understood what their breakdown, what the email was from?
Green, I think one was on.
Insurance, on reinsurance. Where deductibles are and just kind of, you know, overview of, okay? Everybody good with that?
Sure. It's just in Spence. I know, but it's just in Spence.
Yes, we always have a choice. It's just whether or not...
That still appears to be a...
No, you don't.
...good value of what it is.
You don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice?
You'll find out.
Why don't we have a choice?
Because the risk management pool is like NERMA or government entities, municipalities.
Very good.
It's really good.
Go get a quote from J.G. Elliott.
That's right. We have a choice, but this is where we need to be.
You'll find out you don't have it. It's not a choice.
I did that a year ago. Wouldn't worth the time.
It's been two years, too.
It's that.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't go to NERMA, it's not... It's different. There's only a few things like, there were share in life. What else? There are the taxes, now it's insurance.
NERMA came about because of the costs through, right, insurance.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
There's claims on Nebraska Machinery Company, $3,600. Who was that?
Transmission failed in one of the 140 graves. So that's a reman transmission, able to install new fluids and their, per their deal for wanting to do it.
Can you just move this on?
No.
I don't feel, they just kept going from bad to worse. I'm not sure exactly which one it is. It's not on the, I can tell you it's not on the one that was refurbished. That I do know. But which of the other two, that I don't know.
That's one of those one of the, if you went to just refurbish it, I added it in there for that.
It is. It's a reman transmission. That's a hundred and some thousand. That'll be like 175 to do a refurb of one of those. And we've done that once. And the issue with that was, and that's been done a while back, the issue with the refurbished machine is some of the components that do not get refurbished are now what's going to fail. So like your wiring harnesses are still 30 years old. Your hoses, your, some of the major components, yes. But some of the other support stuff that makes it all happen, no. If you want to raise...
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
It's the 2014 H. Bought it new with 350 hours. It's a one lucky runs. That's the machine.
That's what I thought. Okay, Katie?
Since there's sheriff's claim for the credit card, they don't have any receipts with it.
No, we won't do that.
Then we have one to Microsoft, which I'm sure is like Office, Microsoft Office 365 or whatever they subscribe to. Then we have one to Staples for Supplies. And one to S.P. Constitution, which is miscellaneous or ABA, because I don't know what's on that. And here's his, here's his Staples receipt. So the Microsoft one, I'm pretty sure that's a, it says subscription. Pretty sure that's like Microsoft 365 or something. And there's no tax on the Staples one, so... There's no tax on the Staples receipt. The only other one has the SP Constitution 8850 miscellaneous, but I don't know what that is.
So those constitutions, you had that at the last meeting?
Oh, I bet you're right. Those pamphlets?
You're right. Probably. Yep.
And I bet maybe...
365 is a subscription. That's what it says. And, yes, that is the pamphlets.
Is that Office Supplies?
And I think Chelsea could come up with the receipts, but like no internet yesterday and Zane has gone. Would you ask Chelsea if she'd have those in there?
I think she said she did, she was going to have them together. The road department, their US bank ones, there's no receipts either. I was here at 6:30, put her claims together, so I didn't get all of her receipts. So she said the road ones, the receipts from the road.
Okay.
Sophie.
Yeah, she'll just have retention. What was the roads for, do you remember?
No.
Out of all those numbers, you don't remember that one?
It was like 1,500, but I don't know what it was out for.
Did you get my email that I, you know, it was like yesterday afternoon, so I don't know if you got it or not?
I got it right before the internet went out.
Oh. So I just didn't want to make, I wanted to make sure that they didn't charge us for the hotel room.
I think they sent a cancellation already.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, I was going to check. Lost it. It's in some place. Can't get Mike, can't get into Microsoft to get a receipt. Working on disputing charges, but it's going to take a while. Or a sheriff.
Microsoft is pretty apparent that that's what it is. Oh.
And is our explore not under warranty? I don't know if it's any expensive alternators.
All I know, that's probably what they cost. I'm sure.
What happened to the bumper?
It is no downward, then you're 120. Year or two.
Do you know, Lee?
What?
What happened to the bumper on the explore?
I don't. Oh, I'm trying to remember a little. Yeah. How long ago was it?
Well, they shipped it May 14th.
Yeah, I recall something. I don't recall what it was, but...
You're setting it through the back.
It's a, it's a thing.
What's the 17th board course?
It's got to be the card in the, in the card for the sheriff's office.
Oh, that's it? I was...
The one he just bought.
Oh, why was I thinking, maybe I was, oh yeah, it says, I was just stuck on the charge right now. And that comes out of his budget, right? Is that right? Katie, it comes out of, that card, that 10,000 comes out of?
It came out of his special fund, his special sheriff's.
Sheriff's fund? Okay, not general?
Nope.
I'm kind of protective of that general right now.
Nope, that came out of his special fund.
Okay.
This is it.
Do we pay NERMA once a year?
Yes.
Yes. For the insurance.
And NERMA insurance.
Make a motion to pay the bills. I would second that motion.
Not quite through yet. Give me two seconds, leave a gap. Two, four, five left?
I didn't see it.
Sorry. I'm hurrying.
Katie, to clarify, you did pull the pickup?
Yep.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see it either. I'm just wanting to make sure that it is pulled, so it's...
It's on the...
It's on the sheet, but it's not in the bills. Got it. 10 for it.
Yeah, they texted me yesterday afternoon. Ouch, do we really have to pay this one?
One of the honesty we've got by our end of this year. So that's our first significant bill. For repairs that we've had. Can't compare.
You can't expect to win the dollars whether it's here or we have...
If I'm not mistaken, it's an 18, 19,000 dollar machine. So it's anything but new.
Nope. Okay, I'm going down there.
Okay. Motion to pay bills.
Diary second.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. It's been moving second to pay bills. Any further discussion? Roll call vote? Done?
Yes.
Really? Yes.
Yes.
Guys, get to adjourn. Meeting adjourned 9:54.
There's some refreshments for everybody, some cookies or cake, and whatever's left, we'll just leave them.